Okay, so we're ready to call the meeting to order. I'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so I'll read the checklist to ensure meetings are compliant with the right-to-know law during the state of emergency. As Chair of the Sanborn Regional School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there's no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I'm confirming that we are, A) providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the Sanborn Regional School Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen, and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number: The meeting ID is 93962453824, or by clicking on the following website address: B) Providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have been provided on the website of the Sanborn Regional School District at www.sau17.net. C) Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please call 978-482-7394, or email at helpdesk@SAU17.net. If anyone has any public comment, please email the Superintendent T. Ambrose at SAU17.net. D) Adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll-call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll of attendance. Roll-call vote of attendance, with each member states their presence, please also state whether there's anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right-to-know law. So, starting as you appear on the screen to me, Dawn.
Dawn Dutton, I am at home, and I am alone in my basement.
And Jake?
Jake Tedford, I am home in my dad's office alone.
And Larry?
Yes, Larry Heath, I'm at home in my shop, and I am alone.
Matt?
I'm Matt Angel, I'm at the S.A.U. office, and I'm here alone.
Pam?
Pam Brown, I'm at home by myself.
Bob? Bob Dawson?
I think he's froze.
Okay. Jamie?
Jamie Fitzpatrick, I'm at home in my home office by myself.
And Patty?
Patty Haines, I am home in my living room, and my husband is in the house in another room.
Tom?
I am at home and alone.
Tammy?
Tammy Mahoney, I'm in an office in my house by myself.
And I'm Jim Baker, and I'm alone in the house. We have a guest, I guess, Teresa?
Gordon, can you hear me?
Gordon, we can't hear Teresa.
I think I'm unmuted. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, sorry about that. My name is Teresa Schneider-Hines. I was asked by Patty to come attend this meeting tonight. I am in my office by myself. My husband is in the other part of the house. So, welcome.
Thank you very much. Do we want to move ahead to the grade reporting? Teresa's here to report on that, right?
That would be wonderful.
Okay. Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yes.
I'm good.
Okay, okay. So, Dr. Haines, do you want to introduce the report?
Absolutely.
Teresa, thank you.
Absolutely. So, we had a few developments in which we discussed quite a bit of that during ISA just a little bit earlier with our grade reporting system. As the board knows, we've been looking to try to find something that's a little bit more compatible with what we do, and make it a little bit easier for teachers to use, and to give parents more details, more information when we share student progress and student learning goals and what they've achieved. And so, I'm happy to introduce Teresa Schneider-Hines from Alma, which is one of the companies that we're looking at partnering with to work on developing a grade book and using their grade book this year. And hopefully, she'll answer some of your questions, and be able to see what Alma can do for Sanborn. So Teresa, welcome, and I'm just going to turn this over to you.
Thank you, Patty. And at any point in time, please, please jump in on anything. I will, you know, have a short presentation. And I just want to thank the board for allowing a few minutes of your time to take a look at Alma, and just provide you a little background information about the company itself, and then take a look at some of the tools, the modern toolsets that, you know, your teachers could be using. So if you don't mind, I will share my screen with everybody. And then I will ask sure that some could know if you see the Alma screen in front of you?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Excellent, very good. So...
Teresa, I just want to interrupt you. Teresa, I want to interrupt you for a minute. I can only see Dawn, Jamie, and Patty. So if anybody has a comment or a question, please shout out so we can recognize you. Okay? Thank you, Teresa.
You're welcome. Yes, that sounds great, sounds great. So, so let me just start by telling you a little bit about Alma, the company. We're a little over eight years old, and currently we are in 45 states and 45 countries. We've made kind of a big splash in New Hampshire over the past few years, serving over 30,000 students at this point in time, around 15 to 17 different S.A.U.'s total. You know, just so you know, everything that we do, every decision that we make is directly linked to what's best for students, educators, and parents. And we believe that we can have a positive impact on student outcomes by empowering educators with the modern toolset they deserve. You know, to sum it up, our mission at Alma is to help create the greatest generation of educators, so in turn, they can create the greatest generation of students. So that's, that's a pretty lofty goal, to have such, such a high mission like that. And we have four key pillars that help support our mission. And first and foremost is the ease of use. We keep that in the forefront of our mind. So while Alma's interface is easily, you know, easy to navigate, as well as user-friendly due to its modern design, it also offers a very powerful and robust backend, which is extremely flexible to meet the needs of students in schools. It's scalable, so we can work with schools as small as, you know, 25 students, up to thousands of students. And it's reliable as well. The next pillar that I want to take a look at has to do with educational practices. You know, schools are constantly evolving and employing the best practices to address their student needs. We, we support both traditional models as well as progressive educational practices. You know, earlier talking with your admin team, as well as Patty, you know, I get a full understanding that you are fully enveloped into competency and standards-based practices, and that you do it well. And you, you guys are in the forefront for the state of New Hampshire, leading the way. You know, even if you want to push the envelope a little bit further, and you decide that you want to go to something more personalized, like personalized learning pathways for students, we can help you do that. We like to say that we'll meet districts and schools where they're at, and help them move towards those practices that they're looking forward to in the future. The third area that I want to talk about quickly has to do with data. You know, this is a critical area. Teachers, students, administration collect so much data and important information. We want to make sure that we're doing everything to ensure the quality of your data is top-notch. So from beginning to end, we want to make sure that your data is accurate, that it's easy to be accessible and be reliable as well. So you can count on us to make sure that state compliance reporting formats are accurate and up-to-date. And we want to make sure that your S.I.S. is, is the source of truth when it comes to those data-driven decisions that teachers and administrators make on the basis. Finally, that's the last area, last one, has to do with creating strong, well within your educational unity. The S.I.S. can be catalyst for bringing a community together, foster relationships in many ways, and by creating a complete awareness of what is happening in your school and with your students, we can foster those important conversations that take place between students, parents, and teachers, as well as fostering the relationships between your educational staff and our Alma team. By opening these avenues and providing or supporting these valuable conversations, you'll see that the adoption rate will increase with more interactions with students, parents, and staff with our platform. Okay? Now, just to take a look, you know, how does an ed tech company really know what's going on with, with, with schools today? You know, as I said, our company was founded over eight years ago. Our three founders are former educators. And years ago, actually, I shouldn't say years ago, not too long ago, they came out of the classroom, and they were talking with former coworkers, and realizing that, you know, there are many changes taking place in education, but the student information system wasn't really keeping up with the times. And they felt very strongly about adding tools or providing tools for teachers that would effectively, effectively support their day-to-day operations. So they decided to create this modern platform to support all aspects of education. So if you fast-forward to today, just now that about 80% of our staff at Alma come from the educational sector. So with the exception of the coding engineers, the majority of our staff are, you know, at Alma, have worked in, in school districts like yours. I can proudly add myself to that group as well. Before coming to Alma, I recently retired. It'll be almost a year now from a 30-year, 30-year career at one school district in New Hampshire, and had a wonderful time working there first as a teacher, and then as a technology coordinator and integrator. So I have a unique perspective of being that end user of Alma first, and now being fortunate enough to work for such a wonderful company. During these last two years in my educational career, my district was working through that process of taking that journey towards competency and standards-based practices. And I could see firsthand how Alma supported that vision and mission that, that my district had, and helped support it and encourage the process moving forward. One other area I want to just touch on that we feel very proud about has to do with our open support services and customer engagement. You know, we take a lot of pride in our open support model that we offer. In partnering with Alma, you know, your S.A.U. has a full-time, dedicated customer success manager slash account manager who will work with your team to migrate your data, get your school onboard. And even when you're up and running, that relationship isn't over with yet. They stay with you, too, and they will set up meetings with your admin team, or whoever your contact people are, to check in, make sure you have what you need, talk about where you want to go in the future, and provide enhancements to the platform in order for you folks to meet your needs. It's very customizable and personalized. The other area in terms of customer service has to do with empowering teachers and administrators. We want you to reach out to us as a teacher and as administrator. Reach out to us. And we provide an option for you folks to use our live chat feature, where a teacher, by empowering a teacher to be able to click on a chat button within our platform, have a live conversation with a customer engagement specialist to have their questions answered. Typically, or traditionally, in an S.I.S., if a staff person had a question about the platform, or how to do something, it would go through a chain of command. So it would start with the teacher going to the technology coordinator, who would then turn around and submit a ticket, and it could be a few days or a week before those questions were answered. By using this live chat feature and empowering educators, they're able to solve their own problems quickly and in a timely fashion. You know, our CE team's very personable. They, they're, again, they come from education, so they're understanding where teachers are coming from. The response time on a live chat is roughly at nine minutes right now. So during a prep period time, during a lunchtime, a teacher could pop in a question, and then within nine minutes, those questions could be answered. You know, it's an area where I would say, if you ask one of our current customers, they're going to say, this is an area where we really shine and stand out above, you know, the other S.I.S. platforms that are out there. Before I jump into the more specifics of the platform, are there any questions at all regarding the company as a whole, what we stand for, or how we operate?
Again, I can't see you, so just shout out your name. Guess we're all set.
Okay, perfect. Then let's just take a look a bit, look at the tools a little bit. We are a full-service S.I.S., and what that means is all those critical tools are underneath one umbrella. So everything that you need for your district is under one login. You know, we want to say that we're, you know, one-stop shopping for all of the tools that the teachers need, as well as your administrative staff and your administrative assistants. So things like curriculum planning, grade books, report cards, online registration, alerts and messaging, state reporting, medical and behavior tracking, that's all within our platform. So one login, one system. It's not like teachers have to go to multiple systems. It's all integrated into one login. And, you know, with this connection with all these pieces, we're providing clear communication of information. You know, when that's key to our platform, we think of communication, you know, most people do reports, okay, emails and text messages. But in Alma, we offer that, but we also offer so much more in terms of providing visualization that will be able to communicate to parents and students via their portal, and teachers as well. You know, providing that real-time insight of how students are growing and moving towards mastery levels of standards or competencies. You know, like I said, throughout our teacher portal, you know, educators also have that option, too, to see, you know, how classes are doing, how students are doing. And we'll take a look in just a few seconds and drill down a little bit further into those, the grade book and the report cards. All right. So our curriculum tracking tools, they are based on a backwards curriculum design model. And in this backwards design, the first steps is building that curriculum to establish and establishing the learning goals. I bring this up here because there are many facets of our platform where we support one, one entry of data, I guess is the best way to put it. So if teachers are putting their curriculum into our platform, and being able to track the curriculum, again, the competencies or the standards that they're assessing, we allow you to put it in one, and then share it to other, other staff members. So a teacher could put their curriculum in, they could use it from year to year, or they could use it and then tweak it from year to year, and then they could also share it out. So the best-case scenario that I could, I could provide for you is the example of a student, or I'm sorry, a teacher who goes on maternity leave. If their curriculum's sitting right within our system, they can easily share that via a click of a button and provide that information to the person that's coming in to do the maternity leave. And there's no replicating of information, there's no having to create a separate binder of work or things like that. It's all there, all in one spot. And that's going to hold true for when teachers create assignments in the grade books. They can add them once, and then they can share them out to different classes. They can use them from year to year. So just streamlining the process for teachers, and really focusing in on saving time for teachers so that they can spend their time with their students. Okay? As I move on to the more customized standards, we provide, you know, Common Core standards, as well as Next Gen standards, but, or Next Gen Science standards. But we also ask schools to provide us with a list of your homegrown competencies or standards to upload within our system. This way, teachers can attach some of the assessments to any particular standard or assessment that's being assessed. And like I said, we provide Common Core and Next Gen Science as well. By allowing you to use your own homegrown competencies or standards, again, you're personalizing your education for your students. And this is just another great example of how flexible and agile the platform is. So if we go one more step further, let's take a look at a grade book from a teacher perspective. Okay? So here you can see great visualization. So this one student here, Tiffany, you see the standards on the left-hand side across the top. You're going to see the assignments associated with it. And then in the middle section, you're going to see the color-coded progress of a student. All of that information in the middle that's color-coded in the grade book, again, customizable. So if you use a 1, 2, 3, 4 scale, or if you use proficient, and basic, and emerging, all of that is customizable. And you can see visually going from left to right how Tiffany has been doing on a specific standard. And then all the way over to the right-hand side, you're going to see that we can take all of those, those data points and roll them up into a mastery level as well. Again, talking with your admin team and, and getting some information about how, how you folks do assessment and grading, this is a perfect match, you know, for, for what's currently going on in your schools and districts. Just to mention also, top left-hand corner, I mean, right-hand corner, my, my bad. The ability to easily transfer student, or transfer grades from one section to another. It's not like a teacher has to go in and input information again. This is just a time-saving measure, so that if a student transfers from one section to another, click the button, it apps all the information over. If we move on, this is another, this is more of a class-wide view of mastery.
Excuse me, Teresa. Teresa, could you repeat that? You broke up a little bit there.
Starting with this, this new slide?
Yeah, this slide, yes, thank you.
Perfect. So this slide represents a class-wide view for a teacher. So across the top, you're going to see the students' names, then on the left-hand side, you're going to see those targets or those standards. And then the middle, you can see how the class is doing as a whole on, on a particular standard. But the neat thing here is that you can drill down further and click on one of those standards. And over here on the left-hand side, you're going to see the assignments that are associated with the standard. So for this particular standard, there are four different assignments. And then a teacher can take a look to see how students are doing. And quickly, just from this view alone, I mean, it's, it's pretty evident to see that there needs to be some changes made, or there needs to be some reinforcement or extra activities to help the students gain that mastery level that they, they deserve. Okay? On the back end of all of this, we provide multiple ways to calculate mastery level for students. So these flexible calculations can include, you know, the most recent score, decaying average. I believe you folks use PowerLog as well. And then we also have something called Choose Your Own Event Adventure, where you can mix and match those, those calculations as well. These calculations can be set at a class level, or it can be locked down to a school-wide level as well. You know, the calculations can, can be applied to assignments within the current grading period only, or it can be across all previous grading periods for a more holistic student progress capture. Teachers have the flexibility to include assignments such as, or I'm sorry, exclude assignments such as formative assignments, even though they want to keep it as a record in their grade book. They can exclude that assignment from the funnel calculation of mastery as well. Next, if we move into our report cards, just quickly, designing a report card is easy to do. I will preface back to my experience. I was in charge in, in my district of creating the report cards. And in the legacy S.I.S. that we use, I, I won't say names. It, it would take me a good week to design the layout, get all the correct information in, because there were multiple steps in that process. With our report card designing tool, up here in the, in the section here, it's basically a drag-and-drop of components. And then these components, for example, the attendance component, will pull directly from our, from the SIS part of our platform. So it dynamically populates. There's no need to run extra reports or update any information. It's going to pull information live. And then we allow you to be able to customize your report cards however you see fit. This next screen I'll show you has a couple of customized report cards. So you can see that we're reporting out on those standards that were in the teacher's grade book. But then in that middle section as well, here I have an example called Habits of Successful Learners. But this is where you see, like me, your standards that you, you dress with students. So again, completely customizable in terms of layout. We allow you to do close to pictures. There's school pictures on the report card. You can have your own school logo. You can match school colors as well. And then the other piece to this is more, you know, on the back-end side with teachers and administrators that, you know, it's not facing forward with parents. You know, teachers and administrators go through that time period where the administrator will say, it's time to finalize grades so that we can, can print out our report cards. We have a queue workflow process that easily streamlines a process for teachers and administrators. Administrators can see exactly on their, their end, who has completed finalizing their grades, who has not. They can easily send a message to that teacher to ask them to finish up their grades. And then finally, once those report cards are approved by the administrator, the schools have the option to email report cards out, publish them to the parent portal and the student portal, as well as download them, you know, in a batch to print out and hand out if needed. I do know, like I said, from my former school district, when we changed over to emailing the report cards, parents were extremely appreciative of having the option, you know, having it right on their mobile device so that they could see the information. And that's also to say, too, that we do have a mobile app to access all of this information via the parent portal. So, from your parent portal view, this is the last section we'll get into. If I'm a parent, this is what I'm going to look at when I, when I first log in. I'm going to see my two students. I'll see up above a snapshot of what's going on during the week. And then we also have an online component, I mean, an online registration component called Alma Start down at the bottom. So what a parent could do is decide, I'm going to click on one of my students, so I'm going to click on Janice. And it's going to bring up Janice's schedule. And then this is going to look very similar to what the student portal will, will give you as well. So those tabs across the top will also be visible within the student portal. We also, for the older kids, will accept recommendations from teachers, as well as requests from students and parents in terms of future classes. And then finally, very similar to what the teacher sees in that parent portal, they have access to that same they have access to that same information that the, the teacher was seeing in their gradebook as well. So again, great visualization, great opportunity for parents and students to sit down and have conversations together, taking a look at their pros and mastery levels of different competencies or standards. And I think I am at the point where, yes, we are at the end. And would love to take any questions at all, or Patty, if you would like to interject at all any other information, that would be great. I'm going to stop sharing so that you can see my face instead of seeing the screen. But that screen just shows you some of the, the components that all work together within our platform.
Okay. Yeah, I think Jamie had his hand up first.
Well, I want to know I'm here.
Oh, okay, thank you. Pete, do you want to say where you are and?
Yeah, I'm at home, in my dining room. My wife's around here somewhere, so when it comes to non-public, she'll leave. But sorry, I'm late, but the dentist took a little longer than I thought.
Hopefully not too painful.
No, no, he's painless.
Good, alright. Uh, Jamie?
So I got, I got a few questions. There's a lot of information in this system that can be kept, kept in one, one shot, medical, et cetera. What's the security protocols on this? How do you, how do you protect student information?
We have, you know, we have, I want to say that we, we've signed a data security pledge. I know that's just a piece of paper, but we have protocols in place in terms of, you know, where the information is stored on the servers. We use Amazon web servers to, to store our information. It's redundant to each other. But it is highly protected and secured. We have a, you know, a section of our staff that works completely on data security and student privacy that are well aware of the, of the information regarding those rules and regulations.
So, so you, the data resides on, on servers you control, not on the sandbox servers is what I'm understanding?
Correct. Yes, it's all web-based. Yes.
Okay. Another question, do you have any rights to the data? Any of the data, names, anything to be able to sell, market, do anything like to? Do you have any rights to any data whatsoever?
The short answer to that is I would say, no, we do not. We don't, we're in no practice whatsoever because I think that would violate some compliance issues in terms of student safety if we ever were to sell data, you know, in that respect at all.
Okay, um, in the class view that you gave, where you're looking at an entire class, I counted thirteen students listed. Is there a max limit to that class view?
Nope, you can have as many as you want within that class view. I mean, you have to understand what I was showing you were our screenshots, so it's kind of isolated in that respect.
Right, I, I figured it was just an example, but we have certainly have classes greater than thirteen. And if you're going to be limited to thirteen, it kind of negates some of the possibility and the potential of the, of the software.
I'm going back to, you know, scalability, you know, like I said, we can go as small as, as schools of twenty-five up to schools of, you know, ten thousand, you know, so, yes, your, your class size could be ranged all the way up to as many as you need.
You, you, you mentioned, like, more Jimmer, should I stop and let other?
Yeah, go ahead.
You mentioned that there's fifteen to seventeen SAUs in New Hampshire that you are working with. Would we be able to get that list so that we could use them as references?
I most certainly could put a reference list together. I know that, you know, there are some schools that, or districts that will probably, I need to ask them permission first. And we've used some of them that we have as go-tos. And I know you have a neighboring district that is currently using our product as well. But yes, I can put something together and give that to Patty or your admin team to pass over to you.
And then the last is just looking at the customizable-ness of it, if that's a word. It seems that we can put in our own rubrics, our own conditions, our own grading. So it either be the PIP basic, it could be A, B, C, D, whatever we are defining as a district would be accommodatable within it because it is, it is customizable. Is that a correct statement?
That is a very correct statement, absolutely. Yeah.
Don?
Alright, well, thank you for playing twenty questions.
Oh, any time. Thank you. I love the questions.
Um, I want to start off by saying thank you, Jamie, because the first couple of questions you had were questions I had. And then I wanted to ask more, and I don't know if this is a you question or Patty or Tom, I'm not sure. But the medical data that you guys are talking about, to what extent is that? And will parents have an option to not have their children's medical data added to the system?
So the medical data component of it actually comes in with the student information system, which is the level beyond what we're actually looking at here. We're looking at just doing a grade book. That would come in with the student information system. But I do believe that there would be an option to include or not include. What, what we really think about when we think about medical data is, there was one slide, I don't know if you caught it, like, somebody who had a peanut allergy.
Peanut allergy.
It's right there.
Carries an EpiPen and, yes.
Right, those kinds of emergency things. You're not going to get into all of the nitty-gritty of all the surgeries and everything else. That, that's going to be stored in the, in the health office with the nurse, but those are the things like, you know, severe asthmatic or allergic to bee stings. Those, those are those emergency things that you really have to see. Other than that, that gets stored in the health office.
Okay, alright, that's, that's helpful. And then another question that I had was, I know that you had talked about customer service and you broke up a little bit, so I'm not sure if I missed it. But I know there's a call-in line for teachers, but what if parents need help trying to figure out the system? Can parents call in as well, or is there any support for them, or how does that work?
There is, parents can call in more physically, you know, via a phone call, I guess is the best way to put it. We're, you know, what we're trying to do, like I said, is to empower those educators to have that knowledge so that hopefully their first line of, of response would be to the teacher first. And then, you know, if it's, it's technical, maybe the teacher can then turn it over to whoever your tech go-to person is. But do know, yes, that those lines of communication are, are open as well for parents. You know, the major focus of the live chat feature is specifically for teachers and administrators.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure there was some sort of support for parents because I know with the system we have right now, there are some parents that still at the end of the school year, still couldn't log into their kid's gradebook. So I know that we've had some technical issues with it, and I just want to make sure that this is more user-friendly and there's more support for parents with this one. I think, I think that was it. I think those are my couple of questions.
Pam?
So I'm assuming that it's fairly easy for our district leadership to download large data sets to do analysis over multiple years to track progress, student progress? Is that, I'm sure that's the case.
Yes, I mean, we, we, we provide that opportunity to be able to report out, you know, through our reporting tools to access that information as well. Patty, I don't know if you want to jump in on this a little bit more or not?
So yeah, there, there'd be ways to pull information out and we could look at it either by standard, to see maybe certain skills, by class, maybe grade level, so we would look at that, yep.
I, I also, can I just, can I say something about that too?
Uh, well, Pam, okay, Tom, go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to add to Patty's point. It's important to recognize that that would be moving forward. It won't have old data. So the, the, the data from, you know, it'll be more robust in six years as the data grows. But I think Pam brought up a really good point, and that is a very positive part that I noticed in the presentation today.
Yeah, go ahead, Pam.
And one more question. It would be really helpful if we could have data. Say if we increase the rigor of the cut scores for certain subjects taught, to be able to toggle back and forth between the old cut scores and the new cut scores. Because sometimes there's a discontinuity in the average outcome for students when we increase rigor. But if we could show there's ongoing improvement over time, that would be great.
Sure, I mean, I, I think maybe what we're talking about here is the ability to go back through historical data. Is that what you're making reference to? Yeah, you do have a teacher or an administrator as part of the platform. If you adopt the whole SIS, would be able to toggle between years so that they have that historic data right at their fingertips as well. And we also provide, provide the ability for school districts to work in what we call our pre-flight year. So that maybe during April and May, you know, most of your guidance counselors and administrative assistants are working on scheduling. They can work in that pre-flight year without having any interaction at all with the current database that the school year is in.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
A couple of questions. How, how long has this program been you, i- it has been in existence? Have you been doing five years, two years, one year, ten years?
Uh, we have been a full-fledged company for the last eight years. We started out originally doing some work with independent charter schools and then expanded out, you know, to the district level and the, you know, public school level.
Okay, how many, how many, how many presently use this system in New Hampshire?
At New Hampshire, we're around fifteen, and I know that there are a few more coming on board. So I'm going to say around fifteen to seventeen SAUs right now. And then we cover over around thirty thousand students.
Okay, so there's sixteen presently in New Hampshire that are, are using this system.
Approximately, yes. Yep, I mean, I would say no less than.
Approximately could be eight.
Yeah, no, 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 no. I would say it is between, because like I said, I have some coming on board as well. It's pretty, it is a definite number to say that we have fourteen, fifteen on board. Yeah.
Okay, could you, could you show me again the system that the teachers would enter, the, the rubric you use for? Uh, what I'm interested in is how long is it going to take a teacher to fill all that paper, all, all that out for each student? I, I got to tell you, our, our biggest complaint is the parents don't understand it. And I'm interested in teacher time filling out, out this, and I'm concerned that there's too much information there. Believe it or not, too much is, can be a negative thing in education. So I would be interested in two things. I want to see what the parents receive at home. I don't want to see what they get on the computer, because not all the parents have computers. I'm assuming they still go home with students. And I'd like to see, and I'd like to know how much time it takes for teachers to do all this data entry.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to piggyback on Pete's question about the amount of time it takes just to set up this, the, the, you know, so you can use it.
Well, I'm assuming that it's already set up, but how much time do the teachers?
No, you have to enter all the information you're asking about. It's just like if you do online bill paying, you have to put on all your accounts and.
Right, right, yeah.
That is, let, let me start at, at the bigger end and then come down to the, to the smaller end here. Is that, yes, the migration process would take place over, you know, a four to six-week period. So if, if you are looking to come onboard, we would have you up and migrated, you know, for the beginning of the school year. But knowing that you're not using report cards until probably the end of your first trimester, there's some time period there that we can work with in terms of building report cards with you and customizing the information that you want on that report card. In terms of the homegrown competency standards and putting that within the system, we do all of that. So that will be part of that migration process as well. So when a teacher logged in on the first day that they wanted to use their gradebook, all of that information is right there. And they're able to, within their gradebook, create the assignment and then just pick from a list the competencies or the standards that they want to attach to that particular assignment. And then that visualization that, that you see at the end is, is the end product of that gradebook. So the other piece, like I said, the one input of information is time-saving. So if teachers are using, you know, one assignment for five different sections of, of algebra class, they can put in that assignment once and then share it out to the five other classes. Okay? They can share it from teacher to teacher, from class to class, from year to year as well. The standards are already put in there. I'm trying to think what other piece. I just completely lost it off the top of my head.
Students and all the teachers would be in, would be something else that the company would do, correct? Putting all the students in, all the teachers in, all that would go in there, correct?
That, that's part of the migration process, absolutely.
So does that come from a, an existing?
I'm sorry, Jim.
Does that come from an existing database that are, we already use and then you migrate it to your system?
Yes, that is correct.
Sorry, Pete, go ahead.
Alright, yeah, okay. Now, I, I guess I'm, I'm simpler than that. I'm a teacher. I'm now going to start entering my class. I've got twenty-five students and I've got five classes. I now have my gradebook in front of me that I'm now going to start entering data. How long is it going to take me to enter one student or one class? Is it going to take me ten minutes? Is it going to take me a day? I want to know how much work is involved in setting this up every year. I taught at the high school for twenty-something years. Grading has always been a problem. I want to know if this is labor-intensive.
Let me just, it may, uh, my, my answer to that is absolutely not. We provide keyboard shortcuts for teachers to be able to fill in columns and rows as well within a gradebook. I'm just trying to pull up a gradebook so that you can see a live version of this. And this may simplify things for you a little bit here. Let's see. Let me show my screen one more time, to may help out. With your question, Peter. Okay, so Peter, can you see my assignments for language arts?
Alright, yeah.
Okay, so teachers can quickly add new assignments. So they can create a new assignment and then they can copy it from year to year. So if I go into the add new assignments, they're quickly filling out this data right here, title, deciding if it's somewhat informative, maybe they want to put in a little bit of a summary as well. That's completely optional enough to them. They have the ability to put in their gradebook for all students, or they can quickly decide that maybe there are only three students that want this assignment to go to. They quickly click here, bang, that's, that's done. And then they would come down here to the learning targets where your competence and standards would reside. If I quickly look, I have the attached target. I would fill in this information here. I'm just going to put in test assignment. And then I am going to assign it now. So a teacher, actually, let me just point this out as well. A teacher could easily, if they are, you know, someone who likes to prepare ahead of time, they could create their assignments, you know, three days, four days, five days beforehand. They can sit in here and then when they are ready to make it active, all they need to do is click this button to make it go live. Save that information. And then if I come back into an assignment, we'll go to this one right here. Here are the grades right now. We have, like I said, keyboard shortcuts so that I can quickly, let me just delete a few of these grades so that. Right, so say for example, the majority of the class were satisfactory on the assignment. Again, they just click on here, keyboard shortcut, satisfactory, done. So entry in terms of, we asked you for information.
Kim, can I, can I add something? I, I know you can.
Can I finish with my questions and then I'll hopefully be done?
Go ahead, Pete.
When you send a report card home, what's it going to look like? Is it going to be numeric grade or is it going to be a, a letter grade? So in other words, in science, is it Johnny God an, an eighty-nine? Beautiful. Is that the kind? Is that the kind of system you're going to be sending home? Or will it be satisfactory, needs improvement, you know, the system we have now?
It is going to be whatever your administrators want to send home. So we customize it to whatever your admin team um, is is wanting and the practices that you are current, or the practice that you are using within, um, you know, your school system.
Okay. No, that that answers my question. Would would a report card go home in hand with the students?
It absolutely can. It can be emailed home. It can be printed out and handed out. And it can be published to the portals as well.
All right, because I'll I'll tell you, and and I get a lot, a lot, a lot of parents. They do not understand the report card. I will tell you, it is not the administrators' fault. They have had classes and information given out. But parents, every year, there's a new crop of parents. And they're used to ABC or numeric grade, and that's what they're comfortable with. And when they see what they get home now, they are really upset.
Tom, do you want to, do you want to jump in now and address that?
I'm done with my questions.
Okay. Address that and and whatever else you had to say.
Thank you, Jim.
And Pam, you're next.
There's a significant flexibility to this program and Pete's asking process questions. Pete, I just wanted you to understand that it's up to us whether or not we send it home. It's up to us what the grades look like. It's up to us, it's up to us, it's up to us. But the key thing that I want to make sure for the public that does not get lost is the efficiency of this system. When you open your gradebook as a teacher in September, and Teresa, please feel free to correct me if I'm wrong. But your classes will be loaded into the gradebook. You'll open it up. And if I want to create my first assignment to be a quiz on day five, I create the assignment one time and then it shares to everyone I teach. And I can even share that with my colleagues and they can share it with their kids.
Yeah, okay.
So so if you're the department, it it's, it, once the, once the curriculum is loaded into the system after year one, you could hire a new teacher and just share the entire year's curriculum instantly with a new teacher. It's, Pete, it it addresses all the things that you saw that were horrible about this kind of system before. And that's why we're moving quickly on this because we recognize that that efficiency then translates into working for kids. My goal isn't just to save people time. The goal is to improve student learning by focusing on what kids know and are able to do. And then making plans to help them instead of messing around with software. I just want everyone to understand that every decision that gets made, the following question is asked. Will this help with the continuous improvement of student learning? And Pete, you're you're asking about teacher efficiency and frustration. The more we can lower that, the better off they are and the more available they are emotionally and mentally to help children. And I just want everyone to understand that the decisions that we make are are focused on that answer. And I I'll turn it over to Pam because I can go on forever, you know me.
Pam, go ahead.
Yeah, the time it takes to input grades and scores has decreased dramatically because kids are using books and laptops. And when they take quizzes online, the grades are already uploaded to their grade cards or their, um, their scores are already inputted automatically. Um, the only different, the only case where that is not true is in English. So at my community college, the English instructors actually have one less class to teach just because of all the reading they need to do. Um, they're not giving Scantron tests, they're not giving quizzes that are graded automatically, they have to do quite a bit of reading. And then with our non-academic traits, our our work practices traits, those would obviously have to be done, I believe, manually, those traits would have to be assessed and inputted manually.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Jamie.
Just a clarification question. I thought I heard two different contradicting statements, so clearly I didn't hear right. Is historical data being brought into this? Or will this have no historical data from, like, we, and let's say we implement this immediately and we start in fall of 2020. There'll be zero access to historical data at that point in time. Is that what I'm hearing?
We'll still have it, Jamie, in our database, but it won't be in the new system. You don't backload it, but we'll still have it and have access to it. Patty, tell me if I'm wrong.
No, that's, that's true. And and a lot of the historical data that we want to look at would be more from some of the standardized tests that we do with the students. So where we could look at scores and things in the gradebook, we, right now, we don't look at that that much to begin with. But the historical data, we will still have access to not living in this system.
But that's true of any new system, Jamie, just so you know.
Maybe in the education, it's not true at all in business, everything.
Right, right. I understand. I just wanted to make sure. I knew where you were going to go with that, so I didn't want to lose that point.
So then, then let me ask a question. If it's going to be available to us in the old system, does that mean we still have to fund access to the old system and therefore there's not saving?
No, it will be saved in spreadsheets. It's about, it gets data dumped into Excel.
Yep.
Great question. Thank you.
Is there a way to save it digitally? So if you do want to add it at some point, you have it?
We'll have it in Excel spreadsheets, but importing the data would be a massive, massive job. I mean, you'd have to, I don't even know how you do do. It it really is better to have a cut point where the data is saved in an Excel spreadsheet and documents. And then if we need to access it, we look it up and then move forward from there with the new system and it grows over the years. Uh, Teresa, feel free to try and help out here, but if you'd like to speak to this, I'd love to hear your answer.
Absolutely. Um, you know, you, I mean, we would not be, as you said, not pulling over all the historical data. If there's some, you know, standardized test that you want uploaded within our system, so it sits within the student record, that can happen, absolutely. Uh, you know, best practices, you know, is from the the point of adoption moving forward. But I'm sure there are situations where you may need specific, you know, a specific standardized test that we could actually upload that that may be historical. Uh, but as a best practice, uh, in going from, you know, going back to my former school district, that's exactly what we did, was we ended up archiving that information in spreadsheets. Um, we, we actually ended up pulling it down on a local server. You know, because our legacy SIS was allowing us to do that. Um, so that we had that information locally, um, at our fingertips.
Okay, um, Dawn.
I just have one more question. So in this, I know that there's like a file cabinet and all this stuff that can be stored. For teacher ease, is it also possible to store an individual student's IEP or 504 plan in this system so the teacher has easier access to it?
Uh, the ability is there and we have granular permission levels so that only specific teachers will have specific access to tho- those documents, whether it be 504, special education. IEPs, um, they would reside as a PDF.
Okay.
And then, you know, anytime it would be modified, changed due to meetings or accommodations, et cetera. Those would then have to be re-uploaded into the file cabinet.
Tom.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that to Dawn's earlier point about the medical. So many student information systems have medical and IEP information available. But I just want parents to know that maybe listening that you would have an option to opt out. It does save a tremendous amount of time if the teacher can just click on the I, the the link, read the IEP or read about, uh, it 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 just, about, you know, particularly peanut allergies. Having been a K2 principal, peanut allergies are a serious problem for young students that don't know how to self-manage. Uh, uh, so I I think that's, you know, I I would want to go with the the route, with whatever system we use for having people opt out of those options because they are really good for kids, they're safer. And it also helps to ensure that their special education program is being implemented accurately. So thank you for asking that, Dawn. That's a really great question and that's a really important component for for our students with special needs.
I just wanted to make sure it's easy for teachers because they have a lot to do. And then remembering what each individual student's IEP says is nearly impossible. So making sure it's there so they can glance at it if they need to is helpful.
Yep, and and, you know, going back to the statement that I said, uh, you know, the, your SIS being that source of truth.
Teresa, you you broke up.
Sorry.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, it might be Zoom. I just wanted to let you know you broke up.
Yeah, I think, I think so. Um, but as as long as you can hear me now, um, the the point I was going to make is by housing all of this under one platform that is secure and reliable, you're creating time-saving opportunities for teachers too, because they're not having to go to three different platforms or having to log into three different areas to access that information. You know, ultimately, like I said, one of those pillars to our whole mission is ease of access and ease of information collection. So, you know, having it in one spot, you're informing your student, your teachers. You know, those medical alert pieces, I can relate back to being a teacher and having to have a 45-minute meeting with the nurse prior to going on a field trip so that she could run through the list of medical needs of a student. Now, in Alma, you have that information right at your fingertips, whether you're leaving the building or you're staying in the building.
Andy, yeah, Jamie.
Not really a question. I just want to, I want to piggyback on Pete's comment. Uh, I agree with Pete's comment completely about, um, having great differences with the system and 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 in my opinion, grading systems, uh, the traditional ones are what they're used to, what they grew up with and what they understand best. But I would like to to have one statement where I disagree with him. It's not just parents. And my experience has been teachers had different opinions from what it is. And 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 my experience has been that even systemically, our progress reports, for example, um, don't match what our basic plan is. So a progress report, for example, doesn't have ease on it in, um, in some, uh, systems. So we have a lot of issues around that, not just a parent issue.
Oh, Jim's out, so I'll grab the moment. Uh, in that, this has to help with that.
I would think, from what I've seen.
Yeah, it, I I we agree with you, Jamie. That's something that needs to be addressed.
Teresa, um, we have a a cost proposal here. Do you, are you involved in that side of it too, or are you more features and benefits?
Um, I'm, I am part of that as well. Yep.
You were talking about the, the, um, the helpline for for parents and teachers. And I know the parent's side, you said, would be more for technical issues. But on the teacher's side, is that part of the support package? Or are there additional fees that are involved in that?
There are no additional fees whatsoever. Um, the core SIS um, includes all of that. The only add-ons we have, and this is thinking, you know, further down the road, um, you know, if we're looking this year at implementing report cards and and gradebooks. But consequently, you know, further down the road, if you're looking at implementing the full SIS, the only two add-ons we have are, um, the online registration portal and enhanced messaging, so our messaging alert system. But we also will, if you pick up the whole SIS and include all three of those pieces together, we provide a discount per student by bundling all of that together.
And then a follow-up, you mentioned scalability. Are the proposals customized for the size of the student population? Or how do you, how is that, how does that apply?
It is based on the number of students at the time when we start. Okay, we don't do a range like, we'd say, okay, the first 500 is this amount. It is, if you have, you know, 1,586 kids, that's what it's based on.
I see, okay. Uh, anybody else have anything? Comments, questions? All right. Tom, Patty?
I asked, I'm going to ask Patty to look into the messenger component. Because if we can have, the more we can have everything in one spot, I'm into that, right? If I send out a, well, there won't be any snow days after remote learning because we'll do them all remote, but that's another story. Uh, but but if there's, if there's a cancellation or an announcement or a newsletter from us, we would like to know more. So Teresa, if you could follow up with Patty about the communication component, I'd like to know about the cost and then we'll take a look at what we currently use and maybe think about that in the future if we decide to go this direction.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's not a problem at all. Yes.
So do we need Teresa for anything else or? Okay. Teresa, thank you very much.
Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much for your time. Um, you know, Patty has my information too. If you have any questions, please feel free and reach out. Okay?
Thank you.
Have a good night and have a good rest and fortuna. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Uh, so jumping back up to the top of the agenda, uh, can we get a action on the minutes? Does anybody have any changes or discussion?
Move to approve.
Okay. All right, and all in favor, Dawn?
Aye.
And Larry?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
Tammy?
Yes.
Hannah, yes for me as well. Okay, so, uh, communications, Matt, you distributed the manifest electronically. Have you gotten what you need for that?
I believe I've received what I need. I just kind of pulled it together. We're we're golden.
Okay. And, uh, Tom, do you have, you have nominations?
One nomination, uh, we have a nomination for Mary Samantha Briggs for Special Education Reading Specialist. Or, uh, I just wanted to make sure everyone knows that I had Jody update the nomination because there, it it went out originally saying zero, but Jody reduced a position, a case manager position at the lower elementary level to fund this need. So there is no additional cost in the sense that she didn't create a position.
Okay. So you need a nomination on that, right?
I I just needed, yeah, a vote on that. Yep.
Okay. Can I get a, okay?
All good.
All right. And, uh, Dawn?
Aye.
Uh, Larry?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Tammy?
Yes.
Pete?
Aye.
And yes for me.
Thank you.
Uh, any resignations?
One, Sarah Benson, grade one teacher.
Okay, uh, move to accept?
With regret.
Larry's second, okay. Uh, and, uh, the vote, Dawn?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Tammy?
Yes.
Pete?
Aye.
And aye for me. Okay, superintendent's report.
All right, so our summer, this is going to be a busy summer. COVID certainly has taken a a lot of work this spring, but we're already thinking about the fall. And, uh, we'll be having a busy summer. And, uh, we've got a lot of things to do to get ready for, uh, the first day of school on September 1st. Um, this summer, we'll be working on return to school planning with the input of work groups, uh, in adherence with the CDC and NHDOE guidelines. Uh, we'll be looking at, hopefully, transitioning to a new and improved grading system. We'll talk about that later. And developing, uh, the administration will start developing a first rough draft of a strategic plan to be reviewed by the board in the fall, early fall, hopefully September. Um, and then, uh, in terms of the school, return to school work groups, we have established groups that have a wide range of folks from the community and the district involved. There are two groups, one focused on grades pre-K through six and another focused on grade seven through 12. The groups include parents, a member of the school board, teachers from each grade level, guidance counselors, school nurses, building administrators, and SAU office administrators. Our first meeting will be held on Wednesday, June 24th. I also wanted to share some information about the diversity awareness committee. There were some questions from the board this weekend, and I wanted to make sure that everyone knows that the, you know, the diversity awareness committee is going to include teachers, administrators, parents, many folks from the crosscut of the, uh, the school district to take an opportunity to take a look at what we do to support diversity in our community, uh, in our school community. And also to 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 take some time to take a look at the curriculum and the the materials that we use with regard to diversity. Uh, this is particularly going to focus, in my mind, on social studies, and I'll tell you why. I want to make sure that certain things are covered in history. Um, and I'd like this committee to take some time to take a look at those, those pieces. And so there will be a, a curricular component to it. And also the texts and materials that we use to make sure that we're being culturally inclusive and responsive. Um, we do need to teach ourselves and each other and our students how, how to identify racism, bias, and oppression. And as educators, uh, we do need to continually work toward becoming agents of positive change through self-reflection and education. It's important for everyone in the community to know that Sandborne is committed to this work. Uh, this spring, school is closed and the moves are done. So it's really exciting. The, uh, the staff at Baking and Memorial Schools are to be commended for their efforts to prepare classrooms and pack school materials ahead of the physical move of materials between elementary schools. Due to their hard work, the moving company was able to complete the move a full day faster than originally planned. Thank you, Mr. Angel, for all your hard work with them. Uh, professional staff members, uh, were welcomed on Friday, June 12th to inventory the materials they packed and envision how they'll set up their new instructional spaces. There's still summer cleaning that needs to be done, but all of the items have been moved to their new places. With the move now complete, our attention has fully turned to preparing the baking school to open as a pre-K grade three building in the fall, and Memorial as four, five, and six uh, in upper elementary. It's really exciting. The custodians continue to protect, prepare classrooms, and the maintenance department is taking care of the punch list of projects. And our school leadership teams are finalizing each building's respective master schedules. Our administrative team is looking forward to working with the return to school pre-K six work group to determine the most appropriate way to reopen school in September. And the Memorial and Baking, uh, administration wanted to wish their staff members, parents, and students a wonderful and much deserved summer. Uh, and they wanted me to mention that they wanted to thank everyone for the many efforts that went into making the remote learning experience a success. At the middle school, on Monday, June 1st, the middle school had its eighth grade celebration ceremony. The class of 2024 consisted of 113 students. All staff at the middle school should be commended for their efforts to pack the materials and, and prepare classrooms ahead of the physical move between the middle school and high school. The professional staff members came into the building at the high school for, uh, uh, June 8th through the 12th to inventory materials they packed and envision how they intend to set up their new instructional spaces. The custodians continue to prepare classrooms, and the maintenance staff is completing necessary projects. And our school leadership team is finalizing the fall master schedule. Uh, the middle school administrative group is looking forward to working with all stakeholders to determine the most appropriate way to reopen the schools in September, and that would include the high school administrators as well. Uh, they wish the, that all of the staff members, parents, students, and guardians have a great summer break. Uh, we also just, they wanted to thank everyone for the efforts that went into making remote learning positive as well. Uh, at the high school, on Friday, June 5th, we had the graduation ceremony. I wanted to take a moment to thank Tammy Mahoney for handing out diplomas and, and being on stage with Patty and I. It was a really fun event. Uh, it went, went far, far better than planned, and it was really quite nice to have students pull up to the, uh, um, the front of the, the, the stage, and every parent got to see their child get their diploma up close and personal. That was an unintended positive benefit. You know, our graduation is not huge, but when there are 150 students and a few thousand people, it can be difficult to see your child through all those people. And, and in this instance, they were able to pull right up front and see them graduate. Um, uh, the class of 2020 consisted of 151 graduates. Of these graduates, 56% plan to attend a four-year school. 13% plan to attend a two-year school. 17% plan to be employed. 5% plan to attend a career or technical school. 5% plan to work in an apprenticeship program, and 4% plan to enter the military or armed forces. Uh, the district just wants to take a moment to salute the following seniors for their commitment to serve our country. Charles Cook, United States Marines. Christopher Crispin Gasper, the United States Air Force. Casey Frost, the United States Air Force. Jack Griffin, the United States Navy. Ryan Magnuson, the United States Marine Corps. And Horace Wood, the United States Marines. The district would also like to salute the following seniors who held special titles at graduation. Emily Abney, valedictorian. Jacqueline Genthner, salutatorian. Luke Larkum, class essayist. And Sarah Monroe, class president. In other news, school administrators have been busy working with staff to close out the school year. Teachers spent a lot of time inputting final grades, and underclassmen uh, made opportunities to come to the building and pick up personal belongings. Hiring is nearly complete, and currently, the school has one open math position left to be filled. Special education department is working on the extended school year programming, which for most students runs remotely from July 6th through July 30th. All staffing needs have been secured, and the staff are working with families to determine uh, service delivery times. In addition, the department is fully staffed for next year with the exception of some para-professionals. And they are very excited about the duly certified individual who will be our new special education department, reading specialist. And, uh, they are very excited to, to have been able to figure out a way to fund that position and to have that person helping, uh, with reading. I think that, for now, that includes my, my update. They're longer, I know they're longer with being remote, but I'd like you all to know the great things that are going on, and it's important that we share all the hard work that's happening.
Okay, uh, committee reports. Policy. Pam, did you give a report at the last meeting? Because I know you haven't, you met on the third, right?
It's our last meeting, so I don't have a report tonight.
Okay. And, uh, Tammy, ISA?
Yep. So the Excellence and Student Achievement Committee met, uh, earlier this evening. And we adopted our goals for the year. We are pretty much carrying our goals forward. What, uh, they were universally adopted. They will be to develop a plan to implement improved math instruction. Uh, develop end-of-year benchmarks for each grade level, K through six in math. And with the intent of implementing a new grade reporting system by fall 2021, explore grade reporting system and determine critical content. Uh, we had a fairly lengthy discussion on the, um, Alma software that we just had more lengthy discussion on. Mr. Ambrose would like, uh, us to be able to decide by July 15th which way we're gonna go, whether we're going to try adopting the Alma software or stick with the current Wazoo software, which was problematic at the end of this year especially. Is that, is, are we going to return to that agenda item later on in the agenda to have a discussion on whether? So I don't go into that right now. We talked a little bit about, um, the math curriculum search, not extensive. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Facilities met today. And we reviewed the, the revolving fund balance, the, uh, budget reports for the end of, mend of May expenditure reports for health and dental, and also the general fund. The expended through May 30th for the year through May 30th was $28,557.34. The encumbered was $5,380,382.84. And the remaining was $1,594.615.10. Uh, we also heard a, a presentation on the Memorial School entrance, which is, uh, going to be constructed. Um, we also heard a presentation on some issues at Chase Field, and an evaluation needs to be done there. And lastly, we, we, uh, looked at a presentation that, uh, Matt presented on fiscal year, uh, June 30 and, to 2020, and, uh, balances and revenues and tax impacts on monies that we have available, along with potential monies that we can hold in reserve in case we, uh, we need funds, um, next year. Uh, the next facilities meeting is, uh, scheduled for August 19th. And that's the report. So finance.
Finance, uh, we met last on June 10th. Uh, I'm not gonna read through the whole thing, because a good deal of what we spent time on, we're gonna spend time on today and, and go through it with updated numbers. But I will point out a few things. Uh, we did accept the minutes from 6:30. Anamis approval. I'll have to re, um, resubmit those to amend them for the next time, because they still have, uh, Mr. Baker as the chair of the finance subcommittee, and we're gonna kick his butt right off.
Thank you. Please.
Correct, correct that in a minute. So we had missed that. We spent a good deal of time on the spreadsheet at the finance committee. We'll be talking more about that later, so I won't get into those details. Other than to note, as Matt did at the meeting, these are only estimates, and they do not take into account the revaluation, and that has to be, uh, stressed again and again. Um, Matt noted on the pavement in the memorial entryway that we did not really have quotes yet. Uh, we did, we desire, we discussed the desire for accounting of the original high school to middle school costs that were intended, when they were intended, what we've covered already, what's still to be covered, uh, and basically laying out what has been spent and what spending covered, um, in FY20 versus FY21. So that will be coming, uh, due for the next meeting. Matt was not able to pull that data, the data together as he would have liked because of some of the system issues he's running into. We did discuss the goals of the committee for the coming year, uh, and we, we agreed that, uh, we should focus on a, a, a review and audit of the IT, athletics, and the special education areas. Uh, it was noted that this would be a review of how programs are delivered, and what if any improvements can be found in efficiency and effectiveness of the program. Uh, we discussed that it would be an audit of the current programs and fu- and funding, as in all audits likely would have areas of continuous improvement reviews uh, of not just what is being done, uh, but of what is not being done. Um, so we agreed on that, but I failed to get a motion and an approval, so we will just address that to officialize that, um, at the next meeting. Um, and then we will talk about the 500,000, um, reserve later in this meeting, so I won't get into that. And that pretty much sums up the meeting.
Hey, Larry, I think you had a meeting on the 10th?
No, we did not. We did not have a meeting.
Okay.
So, no report.
Okay. And how about personnel, Dawn? I think you met today.
Uh, no, actually, we did not meet today. Uh, we will meet next, uh, August 19th at 3:30 PM.
Okay, great. I think that's it for committee reports. Okay, um, Jake, student council.
Yeah, hi. Um, we have not really started anything for the, um, upcoming school year. I'm just here to watch and learn about what's going on.
Okay.
I wanted to have some experience coming into the next year.
Great.
Thanks for being here.
Yes.
No problem.
Okay, so we've done the grade report. Well, we wanna, do we have more discussion on the grade reporting system?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, I guess what I would say, and Tammy, feel free to chime in if you, if you'd like to elaborate from the ISA committee meeting, but we talked about three options. One, it would be to adopt the software for next year, which would be a savings of about $2,000. Uh, the administration is very excited about the opportunity to try Alma and, and work with it. There's some, been some significant frustrations with Wazoo this year that really boiled over in the last six weeks, and Dawn alluded to those on the parent end. I've experienced them on the administration end, and Bob would probably tell you that some of his gray hair came from it. Um, but I, but I would say that, that all of it, Bob said, yeah. But, but I would say that, that, um, I don't want the board to feel pressure. Uh, there's another option where we could have a special meeting in a couple of weeks and do a little more homework, give people some time to talk about Alma. But there's also a third option where the board would approve the ISA committee to do further research and then make the decision. So those are the three options before you. Certainly, the ISA committee mentioned that they might like to talk to some references, some districts that, uh, are using the, the software. Dr. Haynes and I have done that a lot. And so has Mr. Stack and a few other administrators. They feel comfortable, but we need you to feel comfortable. So, uh, I'm fine with that option too. I think that uh, the ISA committee will do a lot of work on the, on the, what goes into the reports that go home to parents. So it's really important to me that everyone feels that, A, this is not an emergency, but it would be helpful to start working on it sooner than later if we're going to transition, because that data transfer process does take significant time. So if the board would be comfortable with either approving the change uh, for, for next year, and then evaluate it as we go through the year, or uh, uh, giving the ISA committee an opportunity to to do a little more homework and then make the decision. I, I want you all to know I'm fine with all three options. And we could also just have a board meeting again in a few weeks and discuss it one more time, and just have a brief special meeting on that item. It's, it's kind of up to you as a team, and I'll turn it back over to Jim.
Okay, um, I, I'd like to hear from the ISA committee on if we task them with this. Is that something that they're comfortable doing? So.
Hi, speaking for, you know, the committee, if I can speak for the committee. We, we discussed that in our meeting. Um, and I, yes, um, we feel like that's within our purview and our mission. And yes. I mean, other members can chime in, Jamie or Pam.
Agree.
Yep, Pam?
Pam? I'm ready to support it, so. Looks like it's been going eight years, and it's got a huge following. Many districts are using it. I don't think we should delay, but it's really up to everyone else.
All right. And can I get some input from the other board members? Pete, go ahead.
Yeah, um, I'm gonna say, I don't want to go over the frying pan. It's the fun.
Uh-oh.
We have a real problem with the parents understanding the present system. We have a problem with the students understanding the present system, and we have a problem with some of the teachers not liking the system, which is another issue altogether. However, whatever we do, I don't want any more complaints that I don't understand. This is worse than the one before. So it's gonna be really incumbent on the administration and the ISA committee to look at this, and I almost want to say, keep it simple, stupid. Um, so that people can readily look at this and know just what their students doing and how to help their students. Um, and it's awful, because I know the administration has done a yeoman's job trying to explain it to the public. But for some reason, it hasn't worked. I think it's a familiarity problem with what I grew up with is what I want. So that's my main thing, is make sure we don't make a problem a worse problem.
Okay, Tom?
Uh, the report cards in what goes home, I would like approved by the board. So the ISA committee will work on the content, but I want that to go, go to the board. And so remember, the, the Pete's, Pete is 100% correct. What we have right now is absolutely not working. But it's important for us to recognize that with Alma, we need to make it clear to them what we want in that report. And you've all heard me say over and over again, from the day that I was hired, I want to know three things about my son. Where is he in regard to the, the current um, benchmark, i.e. what is he supposed to know at this time? What are his, what are his, what's his performance? Number two, what can I do to help him? If he's way above, you can still help him. If he's struggling, you can still help him. And if he's in the middle, I want to know how to help my son. And then the third thing that I want to know is how is he doing in relationship to his peers? And the peers part is something that we'll work with Alma on. They love that idea, and they have some ideas about that. But that's what the report card needs to show, and I'll settle for nothing less. If I can't open it up and look at it and get those three things in every class, we have, we have a problem. And I think the board, if anyone disagrees with me on that, please say so now, because we've talked about it so many times that it feels to me like I've got a, an unofficially voted on mandate that those are important things. But that, I would assume that we'll bring you a report card created with Alma to go over that.
Pam?
Alma is a reporting platform. It's not going to tell us what types of grades we're reporting. It's customizable. So this is a separate issue from the report card.
Correct.
Yep.
Yeah, Jamie?
Just, yeah, she had mentioned, we've definitely got 14 on board, SAUs. Pete pushed that to make sure that we knew what it was. She's gonna try and get us a list of their approval. Just, yeah, she had mentioned, we've definitely got 14 on board. SAU's Pete pushed that to make sure that we knew what it was. She's going to try and get us a list of their approval. It would be good to reach out to more of them and find out if anyone's got a horror story. So we have, we have two that we've reached out to that don't have horror stories and they speak glowingly of it, which is a, a good testament. Uh, but if there's a wider pool, that'd be good information to have before jumping into, uh, jumping in with the fee.
Yeah, um, I, I thought it was a, it sounds like a pretty impressive platform and it's very customizable. Uh, one of the things that I thought was important is that they, they can track how the students are doing on a real time basis. Um, and I, and I thought, you know, given the amount of money we're going to be investing in intervention, this will be a real help in terms of determining along various steps, how that intervention is working. Uh, because we can keep a very close eye on it and be able to look at where it's working, where it's not working and have the data that's needed to make adjustments as we go, as we go along. So I think that's very important as well. Um, so I, I do think that we should give the ISA committee uh, the nod to look into this further and, and talk to some more of the school districts, just so we have a high degree of comfort that, you know, nothing's been overlooked. Um, so if, if, uh, if people are in agreement with, yeah, Larry, go ahead.
Yeah, just one thing. Like they've already said, this takes a long time to implement. And we want to make sure it's done right. What I would like to see done, it sounds like most of us are in agreement that this could be the program that we want. And I do agree that ISA needs to look at what the overall picture is. Why can't we do something like give them a temporary okay to go ahead and approve it after the ISA committee has checked with the other vendors? And if they feel comfortable and we've already given approval, that way they can get moving on this instead of waiting a couple of weeks. A couple of weeks could make a big difference.
I think you summarized what the proposal was very well. Do you want to make a motion?
I will make a motion that we go ahead, allow the ISA committee to continue with their review. When they are satisfied, we will go with their assumption that it's okay or not and pass it and move on. That's not too good of a motion, but.
I think we got the idea though.
Okay. I think that would, I think that'd be a, a move that would help.
So we're, the board is going to approve it contingent on ISA approving it?
That's correct.
Okay. Can I get a second? Can I get a second? Okay. And a roll call vote, Dawn?
Aye.
Um, Larry?
Aye.
And Pam?
Aye.
Tammy?
Yes.
Pete?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye, and for Patty, um, it would be good to know who had this the longest. And then we get some idea of service levels over time.
Good idea.
That'd be a very important tidbit to get.
Bingo.
So we want to know that who had it, which ones they had and who had it the longest. So I'm an eye on the.
So you, so Jamie, just to clarify, just, you just want me to look in New Hampshire? You don't want me going like national?
Correct, just New Hampshire.
Okay, yep.
Okay, and I'm also a yes. Okay, so now we've got the contingency fund discussion with Matt and Tom. And this is what we reviewed this in the facilities meeting and that's why I didn't go into it in detail because we're going to review it again right now.
Can I just say to start off Jim, is it, is it okay? I'm trying to work on my manners here with this whole, you know?
Yeah.
All right, all right. I said that in the last meeting too. I'm trying, I swear. Uh, I, I do want to say that before we have this conversation, Matt has worked really, really hard to, to try to help us to be a community partner, recognizing that many families are struggling in the midst of the COVID crisis. So Matt has combed the budget, worked with, and Jody Guttermann did an amazing job today coming up with some additional savings from special education and everything that he's about to share with you. The changes are really mostly in, or really truly, and because of COVID, we were able to really save some money and push some things off to the next budget. And I need everyone to know that, that I want the community to hear that number one, these figures are not typical. And number two, we're trying to lower the tax rate the best we can to help so that when people have to pay their tax bills next year, they can. So we need you to know that we see that, that we need to be a partner with our community. And this, these numbers will reflect that, but I want to thank Matt for all of his hard work and particularly Jody Guttermann, who worked really hard to find every penny she could to, to help us with this today.
All right, I'm going to share my screen. I gotta find the right one. Okay, so, um, this is a spreadsheet that I think most of you have seen already. Um, and Dawn, uh, there's only a couple of changes in here from the last time you've seen it. Uh, so I'm going to start off with, uh, we're going to, we're looking at a potential surplus revenues of almost 400,000. It's like 387,977. And then we get into the, the, the turnback of appropriation. Um, our May, I can't do June's statements right now just because the way we do payroll here. Um, this, the, the system doesn't do encumbrances correctly. So I have to go back to May. And basically the May reports, um, I've modified where, um, I have to take out an additional 22,000 for health insurance. However, we're looking to try to release, uh, just over 400,000 in encumbrances and make that available to reduce the tax rate. Um, and then we also have a bus company adjustment in there. So we're looking at just over $2 million in appropriation that's being turned back to the taxpayers. Now, when we were discussing with the facilities committee tonight was more or less, do we want to take the memorial entryway and paving at the middle school? Do we want to pay for it this year? Or do we want to delay it until next year and pay for it next year? And try to squeeze more money out of this and return it back to the taxpayers. It was decided to push it off to next year. So essentially these three items right here are still remaining. And so on this 2 million, I'm going to spend 240,000 to finish off the middle school transition. So, um, if you add everything together, the revenues and the turnback of appropriation, it's 2.1 million dollars available to the taxpayers. Now, last year we, um, we set aside 400,000 in the contingency fund. And you have to annually renew this. So essentially right now that 400,000 is getting returned back to the taxpayers. So, um, but the taxpayers voted 125,000 to go into the capital reserve funds. So with that, with everything that's above there, um, we have 2.4 million dollars that's going to go back to the taxpayers. Now I've switched spreadsheets here and we're going to go to the calculation for the contingency fund. The way this works per the statute, we have to look at the net assessment and the way I've determined it, it's the local, it's the local taxes getting raised on the tax on, if you look on your tax bill, it's going to be the local share of the real estate tax. Now, uh, you multiply that by two and a half percent and we're able to set aside 569,245. Now, if we took the available amount that's going to be, um, available for the, uh, the taxpayers, um, if we were to take out the maximum amount of the contingency fund, which was the number that we discussed tonight, the, uh, facilities meeting, we would, that would mean that we would have, uh, 1.8 million dollars, uh, available to reduce the tax rate. What that means is for Kingston, it would be a reduction of 35 cents per thousand. And for Newton, it would be a reduction for 59 cents per thousand. If you had a home that's worth $300,000 and as we said before, these numbers are all based upon estimates from the prior year and it will change based upon the information that's going to be coming out this fall. That means that for Kingston, um, you would expect to pay for the school tax 105 dollars less than last year. And for Newton, you would pay 177 dollars less, uh, compared to the prior year. Now, again, this is a, it's a spreadsheet that, um, if we, if we're through, going through the discussion here and you decide that you want to only set aside 500,000, um, I can just change the number and, and give you, um, the tax impact.
So I want to emphasize that this would reduce the school portion of the tax bill that will not, it does not affect the portion of the tax bill that comes from the, the county or the towns. And, and they've had some substantial spending this year, so, uh, this will help, but it, it's not going to be a zero or it's unlikely it will be a zero increase when you figure in the towns and the county. Um, Matt, I've got a question for you. If you could go back up to the top.
Yep.
The 210,000 for the, the locker room, the bathroom and the science, uh, the water for the science labs. That work is currently under construction. Is that right?
That's correct.
So was that money, part of the money that was encumbered?
Uh, I don't believe on this particular report, it's included in the encumbrance. Um, now I also anticipate that it's going to be a little lower. Um, however, there could be some change orders, but we don't know yet.
Okay. So as far as you can recall, the 210,000 is not part of the, the encumbered dollars.
I, I don't believe that it is.
Okay.
Jamie has his hand.
Who?
Jamie does.
Jamie? Jamie, go ahead.
Okay, um, just a couple of points that I wanted to make on this. Um, basically, uh, when you get to the amount that would be rolled back, so I'm supportive of withholding and my reasons why being supportive of withholding it is we are still putting back into the taxpayers a substantial amount of money. And in addition to the substantial amount of money, we have paid ahead on the transition from the middle school to the high school, significant dollars. So when we talked before in the finance committee, we're looking to get that kind of reconciliation that says, here's what the original plan was for the transition. Here is the original timing of the spending for the transition. Here's what we've already done. Um, we, we've done a good chunk of that in FY20 and Tom had mentioned in these meetings also, some of the cuts that were made uh, in anticipation of the savings, um, already. So we've really accelerated this activity, um, and to be in a position of being able to withhold some and still provide tax relief. It, it provides us two options. If in fact, there is a surprise in the next two weeks before the end of the fiscal year. Uh, we talked in the facilities meeting that, uh, Matt identified that his recommendation would be then this gets revisited, revisited no later than September beginning, uh, to say, well, we're not going to continue to withhold all that. So that can be reviewed. Last year, if people recalled, we thought we got till November and it didn't quite work out that way. This was by targeting September, um, if there was any gutters that happened at the last minute, we can, we can revise and extend our, our remarks, as it were, and make a change here. Um, so we, we had that, um, that opportunity to be able to do that. Uh, and, and as I said, paying, paying ahead where we are and getting a chance to look at that whole reconciliation, I think what we're going to find is, uh, we have, we have put ourselves in a good position. And for next year, there's a significant amount of money that's fairly guaranteed. Never say, never say never, but there's a very high chance of it also being, uh, completely flowed back uh, in time when people are coming out of their next session of COVID, as it were, and there's still some of the lingering hangover from, uh, the impacts of people's, um, income that have been hit by COVID. So I think it's prudent to put it there so they can flow back into next year's, uh, tax base. So those are my comments.
Um, does anybody need the spreadsheet to remain up at this point? Okay, Matt, could you lower that so I could see everybody? Thank you. Great presentation. Um, so does anybody else have any comments or questions? Tammy?
I have a clarifying question. Um, is, is the decision, is the only decision we're making right now, whether, whether and or how much money to put into the contingency fund? There were, there were some other, it looked like there were some other questions on the spreadsheet of whether we wanted to pay for some of the, some repairs out of the unexpendable funds. I just want to, is that what we're discussing right now? Are we going to be discussing withholding money from the unexpendable fund balance to spend on repairs?
All right, Matt?
The, um, withholding, uh, the contingency fund. Uh, we've already discussed at the facilities, whether we're going to be trying to do it out of this year or next year. Um, right now I don't have a paper lined up. I probably won't have it before the end of the year. So it's, it was an easy decision to push it off to the next year. Okay, um, so this whole discussion here is just focused on whether we're going to try to uh, smooth up the tax rate for next year and, and benefit the, um, the taxpayers for next year. One of the things that I did say, I'm just going to expand it a little bit. Um, I did say that, um, uh, I do recommend that we withhold up to or, or over 500,000 because I really anticipate that with what we're trying to do right now, uh, the, the taxpayers are going to have more likely chance to pay their taxes this year. I, I anticipate next year is going to be a little more difficult. So I want to try to set aside a little bit more next year so that we can pull that out and, and help them out next year.
So yeah, Tom, go ahead.
I think it's really important for everyone to remember that we, we do recognize that balancing taxes and the increases in taxes is really important. But if we can, if we, if we aren't careful, we're going to create a situation where it goes down a lot one year and goes up the next, just inevitably. So the more we can do to equalize the, the return and equalize the overall fund balance, the better off we'll be as a, as a community in terms of folks not feeling like, people have a very short memory. If their taxes are lower next year and then they go up a lot the year after, they're going to feel frustrated and I don't, I just don't want, I want people to understand we're trying to help.
Um, yeah, Jamie.
Um, just clarification points. Uh, the only, uh, funding coming out of the trust and reserve fundings and capital use plans, et cetera, were, were already voted on by the board. So there's nothing new on that on the spreadsheet that says it's coming out of some other spot. Um, and the other thing I want to say is the comments that I made before are my comments as a board member, they're not comments from the finance committee because the finance committee did not see this entire spreadsheet. Uh, when we met on six, 10, the number was considerably less and Matt was going to continue scrubbing and he and I have been working on it. So I just want to make that clear that my comments were my own personal comments and they were not representative of a position by the finance committee.
Um, Matt, the, the total numbers that you have left over, um, including the unencumbered funds. At this point, what other than something out of the blue that's totally unexpected, what would impact those numbers to reduce them?
Uh, it would be some sort of spending that, uh, it, it would be minor spending. Uh, I don't really anticipate seeing anything major in the next two weeks.
Okay.
If any major does occur, we're going to have to ask ourselves whether it could just wait two weeks. And, and I, I honestly don't think two weeks is a hard ask to, to do.
Uh, go ahead, Tom.
I just had a question. I, I didn't realize that the, or I, Matt, can you clarify? So the bathroom for 210,000. Will that come out of next year's money or will it come out of?
It, it's coming out of this year's money.
Okay. And what is the total amount that is left over if we withhold the 569,000 and the bathrooms paid for? I just want to make sure I have the right figure in my mind when I'm.
It was 1.8 million. 1.8 million.
Thank you. Okay. All right. I, I am thinking correctly. I just wanted to make sure that my.
And I've got another question for you, Matt. As far as what could be, what needs to be decided tonight versus some date between now and September. Uh, Jamie raised a question about, uh, the contingency fund and, and the, the remaining money that could go back to the taxpayers. and and the the remaining money that could go back to the taxpayers. Could you clarify that as far as timing goes?
Okay. Um, one of the important keys for our financial reporting is to make sure that uh that we make a decision like this, you make it within the fiscal year that that you're reporting on. So when we hit June thirtieth, which is the reporting date for the district, it reports the set aside for the the contingency fund accurately. Now, if we were to report it after the end of the year, we're essentially trying to vote back in time that we're doing um we're setting by this money. And the farther that we go back, the farther forward we go in time, the harder um it is for us to legitimize the uh the vote going back in time. Okay? So it's really better for the district for financial reporting that we we try to do it in June. And then we reserve time like in August or September to review uh whether we want to release funds because the statute allows us to release funds after the date. Um, and and address it that way. So what I recommend it is is try to um make a decision in June to set aside funds and then make another decision in August or in early September to release funds if needed.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? I have a a proposal I'd like to run by the board. Um, adding includes the one point eight million and the five hundred and sixty nine thousand at the two and a half percent. So I would propose a minimum return to taxpayers of one point eight million with the balance remaining to be retained as a contingency fund up to a maximum of five hundred and sixty nine thousand, two hundred and forty five dollars. So if we have, if we can do the whole five hundred and sixty nine, two forty five, we do it. If we can't, uh, then we have to shave that off a little bit. We commit to giving the taxpayers a minimum of one point eight million back. Um, if we have more at the end of June, we can give them the rest minus the five hundred and sixty nine thousand, two hundred and forty five.
Uh, I I do, if I may, I understand that that is subject to change because we don't know what's going to happen next two weeks, but with only two weeks to go, I think you're absolutely correct. No, I mean, something could happen. We end up giving less back because we have a fire, but I I I agree with that.
Okay. Any other? Jamie?
Uh, I'm I'm fine with that. It's basically saying the same thing in my mind because I don't anticipate a big change happening in two weeks. I
Okay. Uh, anybody else?
Jim, was that a motion that you made?
Yeah, it was. Yeah, it was a motion, a motion to re, do I want to read it again?
No, that's fine. I'll second that motion.
Okay. All right. Um, so roll call vote, Dawn?
Hi.
Uh, Larry?
Hi.
And Pam?
Hi.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Hi.
Pete?
Hi.
And it's yes for me as well. Okay, all right. Thank you, Matt, Tom, for clarifying all that for us. And the the work that was done to uh control those numbers this past year with excellent job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So
And to Jody too. Don't forget Jody Guterman.
Yeah, absolutely.
Get it into home base and.
Yep, thank you, Jody.
Yep, I'll let her know.
Um, so now we've got the athletic uh COVID nineteen reopening. Bob?
Can I, can I just click us off first though and give a little context?
Sure.
Thanks. Um, I asked Bob to be here. Sorry, Bob, you, well, you got to see the grading presentation anyway.
I like that twice, right?
No, I I I I just wanted Bob to come and talk to you because look, as we move forward through the next three months, this is going to be gray at times. And there will be times where I'll bring an item to the board and say, I'd like you to weigh in on this. I would like to see our children using our fields. It's summertime and our kids need to have activities. But Bob has done a lot of homework on three or four different major documents that guide the opening and use of fields. And when he shared it with me, I thought it would be better if he, as the new uh assistant principal for student activities, would would give you all um, otherwise known as the athletic director. I just want Bob to give you all uh, you know, an overview of what, how complex this has been for him. And and have you weigh in on your thoughts on this? You know, I I think we need to make a decision. Are we going to let people use the fields for the summer? So I'll let Bob take the the lead and he'll walk us through this.
Sure, thanks. Um, I assume people have the document or I can put the document I prepared up on the screen if that's something you prefer.
Good job. Put it up, Bob.
Yep. It's not my screen, so. And every once in a while it acts a little weird because I'm using two monitors at once, so we'll see if this works. It should. Are you seeing that or not?
Yes, we are.
Okay. I see mountains in front of me and it over here, but as long as you're seeing it, it's good. Um, yeah. I love two monitors. It's a magic thing. Um, people are eager to get going. Uh, there's no question about that. Um, a lot of the initiatives that we've seen with youth athletics have evolved around people getting started. They want to go. Um, some of those I think we have to keep in mind are people that are uh financially reliant on those activities beginning. Um, we don't happen to have that uh situation in front of us. At the same time, we do want to get our athletes prepared for the upcoming seasons as best we can and give kids outlets and ways to prepare for whatever the fall will entail. The guidance we're receiving right now is changing uh literally, uh actually, I should say actually, because that's the right word. Um, daily. Uh, we received a governor's update about ten days ago. That's folded in here. The New Hampshire Athletic Directors Association um has guidance and I was chatting with Vicki today in her office while she was on a conference call while they're revising something they put out last week. So um, this is how quickly things are happening. I also reference here the National Federation of High Schools, the CBC and the Olympic Committee, although I've left the Olympic Committee largely out of this because their guidance is uh from the late uh from late April and I think is uh woefully out of date, so it really isn't included here. Um, in putting all that together, what I did and I was riffing off of the athletic directors and you, these are, I don't know if you guys got them as links in your documentation or not, but I believe I've used the exact title for each document if you want to look up the source documentation that I use. Um, but down here, this, and I I did want to note that this is phase one, that there's likely to be uh multiple phases to this opening and they may go, we may go what you would consider going backwards um to become more restrictive or we we need to pull the uh permission for people to use the field. And this is really pe, permission for folks to use our facility, but it's also permission potentially for our coaches to be involved with their athletes. Let's say a basketball coach who might want to go and practice at a local facility. It'd be my preference that everything right now be outdoors, that if it's not outdoors, it doesn't happen. I don't think we specifically put that in here, but we can. Um, and I, what I tried to do is summarize what each recommendation was and then I just took the liberty of choosing the ones that I would prefer that we use. Um, I adapted one and kind of expanded it. That would be instead of a six foot social distancing, I think it's reasonable on a, on an athletic field to go with double that and go with twelve. And you can kind of see where we're coming in. The general idea is that the athletes would come to a session that would be supervised by a coach or another uh, you know, vetted volunteer. They would not assemble in the parking lot. They would hit straight in. Everybody would have masks on until they were instructed to remove them at the beginning of vigorous activity. They would be twelve feet apart. They would not be um, you know, playing collectively as a group. So you wouldn't have a basketball team in a scrimmage, but they might be doing a shooting drill or they might be doing things like that where they would be uh working together, but they would be maintaining the social distancing as best as we can. As much as possible, you're cleaning the equipment in between use. Um, that's a little tricky with things like basketballs that might be going around or a coach using a soccer ball to do practice for a goalkeeper, things like that. But you would want to keep the equipment as clean as much as you can. So I already told Matt that I'm, if this is something we do, I'm going to need somewhere in the neighborhood of one billion wipes um to make it work. I'm not sure that's in the budget. You might want to change the discussion you just had. Um, not that many, but I'm going to need a lot of them and a whole bunch of hand sanitizer. Um, one of the other big pieces here that you may have noticed is something called that I saw once referred to as cohorting. Um, I've gone back and forth on that and what that generally means is you have one group of ten kids or nine plus an adult. And those ten never practice with anybody in any of the other groups. Um, I can understand that from a team perspective. Uh, if we start practice, let's say for football on August fourteenth, I could totally understand doing that. You would have ten kids doing their work with only those ten. It's difficult in the summer.
Well, we lost you.
Yeah, Bob, we've lost you.
Uh, we can't hear you.
Um, but you know, you
I'll get back.
Bob, we're reel it back about about forty five seconds. We lost you.
Yeah, my uh, the internet in my building is pretty terrible at night. It works a lot better during the day, so I apologize for that. Um, one of the things I was talking about co-
You're you're done again.
Cohorting does not want to be talked about.
Yeah, exactly. There's a, there's a cosmic censor on cohorting.
Matt? Bob, can you hear us? Because we can't hear you.
Yeah, it'll come back. Blah, 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 blah.
There you are. We hear blah, blah.
The blah, blah makes as much sense as anything else, I suppose. Yeah, I know. I live next to a a restaurant and I think they're eating up my bandwidth is what they do sometimes. Um, so
Do you, are you using a wireless connection?
Yeah, and and I just was looking into getting it wired up. It doesn't bother me much during the school day because I'm, it it does work better during the day, but once that restaurant opens.
Uh, we have a, do you have a router that you're in your, in your house that you can plug into with an ethernet cable?
Uh, I don't have the capability to do that with the computer.
Yep.
I don't have the right, can I, I'm trying to get that done so I can do this, but my apologies. It it usually is pretty good for about three minutes and then you disappear.
Okay.
The idea of the cohorting is that one, you'd have a group of ten athletes that would never mix with any other group ever over the course of a long period of time. I don't think that's practical because I think we're going to have kids coming in and out. Um, the idea is if anybody in the cohort gets sick, you then do some research in isolation on the entire cohort. That's fine for, you know, a large scale team um or a team that's going to be consistent together. Once the season starts, I could see doing that. I don't, I can't see doing that right now in a practical way. Um, so that's something I wouldn't recommend. Um, but if you have a chance to look through this, I'd be curious and welcome your input on that. As a whole. Well, as actually pieces, not as a whole, but.
All right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, does anybody need the screen up? Okay, Bob, why don't you take that down so we can see, I'll see each other. Thank you.
Welcome.
Uh, does anybody have any, any comments on this? Tammy?
I just um question. Did you consult any coaches? Were, was there any input from any of the coaches on this at all or what, what feedback if there was?
Mm-hmm. Yep, I've had um a couple of comments coming in from uh two coaches um that are both high school teachers that have talked to me about this. Um, one is a lot more eager to get going than the other. Uh, but that's fairly typical. You know, they they would want to do certain activities over the summer. Um, but the um I think everybody kind of understands something is coming. They just want some guidance so they know how they, how and in uh and when they can get together with their athletes. So not widely have I looked, talked to them, but I think I have a pretty good read on what they're looking for, to be honest with you.
Do they feel this will be workable? The twelve foot, you know, distance is, I think, difficult. I guess unless you're doing drills, is that all they're going to be doing is drills?
Yeah, this would be an absolutely no contact situation whatsoever. There would be no contact between the athletes at all. At this, this particular stage of the process, um, that's not something uncomfortable with at all. And basically, if you look at the phase one across the board, they're talking six foot at all times.
Uh, Tom, you're next.
Oh, no, go ahead. Go to
Okay, Pam? Pam?
Uh, good job, Bob. And I'm assuming this document is probably obsolete by now, but um we're going to be filling in and taking away X's by the end of the evening, but I really appreciate your work on this.
Thank you. I I do, I did want to mention one more thing. I I have uh Vicki happens to also be on the uh NHIA Athletic Council. And I know they are coming with a document that's not publicly available yet, but it's pretty close to in line with what we're talking about here. It's not going to change much of what we do.
At what point will you be able to uh assign a schedule or timeframe to these of that uh openings?
I think the first thing that we have to do is um Matt and I talked today a little bit about um the fields. Right now our fields, we have to make sure that the fields are at, are ready for that.
Yeah.
We've gone to sort of a different maintenance program out there. Um, I think largely to keep those guys from having to be together. Um, there's some marking and things that I would want to put in place. Um, some restrictions on the fields I would want to put in, but those are sort of decisions that I would hope you guys would let me do. Like, I don't want teams practicing at all on the uh, the game football field, on the game field, the varsity, actually it's the varsity and JV field, hockey field, nor do I want them on the varsity soccer field, which would give basically almost all of the baseball field area uh at the high school and the softball field area for people to use right now. Uh, that's just to preserve those fields and we also have to kind of run a quick safety check and everything. Um, I heard a reference, oh, I don't know, hour and a half ago about the Chase Field Complex.
Right.
Some concerns that Matt has over there. We have to look at the whole situation about where we are.
Okay. Uh, Jamie?
Uh, just a couple of points. Um, you know, I I I appreciate what you put together. Uh, you know, your your statement about you'd like to make those decisions on your own. I agree with that. Also, I don't think we can be involving ourselves in that type of uh minutia detail.
Thank you.
And my, my thoughts are two. One is we ought to consider uh athletes signing waivers if we're going to get together. Lawyer, I, it doesn't mean anything, but okay, it means, it means better than not having a waiver.
Mm-hmm. Or is it, there is a waiver on there. It's like the fifth line down and that was something that worked. That's okay. I went through it pretty quick. It's something I, if if only we had a lawyer that I could have read over something like that really quickly and help me with that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, that 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 makes sense. I mean, the other thing that makes sense is we we need to understand as a board, these are kids. We can say all those things and we can have the best intention. They're not going to maintain twelve feet at all times. Just, it's not going to really happen that way. By by picking twelve, I agree with that. You you restrict the amount of times that you get within six, but in a dynamic situation, you know, we all have to understand that that there's risks in life and 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 we're not going to be able to make anything foolproof. And and that's just reality.
Yeah, we um, one of the things that's in the um, the sort of preamble, if you will, at the top is the idea that um, people have to accept that, you know, you can either have this or you can have nothing. And if, you know, there are violations that we can identify and you know, we know that people are doing things out of bounds that we may have to, you know, shut things down for a day or two sometimes to send a message that, hey, you know what? You guys aren't playing ball. And uh, you know, we're, we're serious. I mean, I don't know how you guys all feel about masks, but you know, when I go to Market Basket, this just this afternoon, it's about fifty fifty and that drives me bonkers because I worry about the people working there uh more than I do even do myself. But, you know, at least it's a reasonable ask. I would expect people to do that. If they can't, then maybe they don't do their practice on our, the district's fields or under the auspices of our coaches.
Pete, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, um, I was charged uh with finding out about our ball field, magnet fields, etc. And I think I sent Tom some information about amateur athletics two point O. Um, one of the things I did was reach out to our insurance carrier. Uh, I believe it's the same Primex. So Bob, if you want to give me a call, I can give you a name of a lady that I talked with. Very, very helpful. I don't think there's too much because this is a school. And of course, we're a municipality, but I think we have the same carrier. Wouldn't hurt maybe to touch base with her even if she said, no, you're all set and good to go. Um, so if you want it, I can give it to you. Um, I mean, she had like, we're doing memorandum for understanding with the Babe Ruth League and Little League. You wouldn't have to do that, for example. Um, but the sign in was things that that she talked about and it it, it wouldn't hurt, I guess, what I'm saying. I don't, you know, it may be a wasted call, but it wouldn't hurt to reach out to Primex. I I believe Primex is also the school's carrier.
Correct.
And she was, I I won't give you the name, but she's a risk management consultant for Primex and I've got her phone number right here.
Okay.
So.
Thank you. Thanks, Pete. Anything else on this? Oh, Dawn?
Um, I just want to give a little
Another perspective, I guess, on 12 feet, because I know some people are going to be like, well, it's six feet, but when you look at. The stay at home 2.0 that was updated on June 15th. Group fitness classes, that stuff kind of. Goes into what you're talking about and they recommend eight to 10 feet of separation. So when you're talking kids that have a harder time staying apart, I don't necessarily think saying 12 is a bad idea. Because if they're saying adults in group fitness classes should be eight to 10 feet apart because of potential spread, because of, what is it say? Is preferred given that the physical exertion and heavy breathing involved in workout activities may lead to respiratory droplets being propelled longer distances, putting surrounding individuals at risk. So I, I don't, you know, I just want people to understand that. You know, 12, yes, it sounds like a lot when you're talking six feet when you're walking by somebody, but there's legitimate reason for having that extra space there. So.
Yeah, and that definitely played into my, my thinking on that.
Yeah.
Particular piece of it.
All right. Anybody else? Tammy?
So this, this pertains to. Our, our coaches and our athletes, school district. Coaches and athletes, is that, is that correct?
It was written in that vein, but I know there are other people that would like to use our fields.
Right, my, my feeling, I brought this.
Around the public. The public's use of our fields, people like to use the trap or walking, et cetera. What is, what is, what is our policy on the public being able to access the facilities?
Go ahead, Tom.
So the intention of bringing this here is that we will adopt this for now. As our use of fields. Agreement, if people want to use our facilities, they have to follow what's in that list, whether it's our kids or private or public. Because if, if we're not going to do it for our kids, we need to do it for everyone, or you know, if it's safety, it's safety. Right, and the one thing I'm not comfortable with at all is inconsistency with safety. If we're saying that this is what needs to be safe to keep everyone. You know, safe, sorry, I didn't mean to say it in a redundant manner. It's always harder when the camera's running. I, I think that, that it's important to note that Mr. Dawson has put together a very detailed and comprehensive. Recommendation for the use of the Sanborn Regional School District Fields, and I'm asking that the board. Give him the authority to maintain that and update the document over the summer as he sees fit. Based on ongoing guidance, but that he would have the responsibility of managing that, and this is. This is the starting point, so Larry, I'm giving you your motion, I know you're. Listening, so I'm, I'm trying to get the motion out there.
Yeah, so what are we going to call this, use of fields requirements or use of fields what? Let's give it a name.
Bob, what would you like?
I think. I would probably call them. The first word that comes to my head is protocols, but it doesn't.
But you want something that's more regulation, right, than a guiding guideline?
A guideline probably works, yeah.
But that's, I was thinking something stronger than guideline, though.
Rule, Bob's Bible.
Like something like requirement, requirements or, I mean, regulations, that would be a legal thing, but. Requirements are some synonym for that.
I think requirements works, because that's basically saying, here's what's required, if you don't like it.
Okay.
Minimum standard of care.
Okay, so. Larry, could you make a motion? If I can try and do it. Use of, use of fields requirements and authorizing Bob.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we. Authorize the list that has been presented to us. And authorize Bob to make necessary changes as time goes on. These would be called policies or requirements. As established to prevent covid nineteen spread. Is that good?
It's good.
Off the top of your head, that was fantastic.
I'll, I'll second that. I think we covered most of. Okay, so, roll call, vote, Dawn?
Aye.
Tammy, do you have your hand up? Are you whacking your cat? Larry? Larry? Oh, yes. Okay, Pam?
Hi.
Tammy? No vote for the cat. Jamie?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
And yes for me. All right, thanks very much, Bob.
Thank you.
And as, as things change, I'll update Tom and I presume he'll feed that up to you and keep you guys up to date on where we're going and what we're thinking as things change.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you, Bob.
Good night.
Matt, we've got an item under old business, is that anything, you have anything new on medical supplies?
The only thing I have new from medical supplies is that the state. No longer can I get product through the state for free. So we're going to use masks, I'm going to, I'm going to order a whole bunch of face masks for the, this summer for this fall. And I'm going to be doing that probably in the next week.
I don't think we have any other business.
We do have a small, very short, non-public.
Yep, okay, so.
You promise?
Okay, so the next, next meeting, if you have items you want on the agenda, please email Tom and myself. The next Sanborn Regional School Board meeting will meet. Meeting will be held via a remote connection on Wednesday, August 19th, 2020, if not before. Please visit the sau17.net website for the links to participate. And I'm going to. Call for a non-public session, Larry, do you want to do the honors?
Get point of order, if I.
Yeah, go ahead.
You, you announce that as a remote, I don't know that that will be a remote, given some of the restrictions, that might be a. Meeting, so we should, we shouldn't define it as a remote, because it might be illegal to do that as a remote at that point.
Okay, so, that's so noted, please visit the sau17.net website for. Updates on the next meeting and, and how it will be held.
Yep, thanks.
All right, Larry?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into non-public session for RSA 91. Dash A, colon, three, Roman numeral two.
Okay, and roll call, vote, Dawn?
Aye.
Larry? Aye. Pam?
Aye.
Tammy?
Yes.
Pete?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Yes for me.
Mr. Chairman? I move that these minutes from the previous. Non-public session be sealed in perpetuity.
Okay, second. Dawn, roll call, vote?
Aye.
Larry? Aye. Pam?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Tammy?
Yes.
Yes for me.
Now, do you want the next one?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman? I move. The Kristen Mc. McNulty. Be approved for a $6,000. Bone of. Increase. Starting as of. The next pay period.
Or July 1st?
July 1st.
Yep.
But that's a better date.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Dawn.
Okay, roll call, vote, Dawn?
Aye.
Comments?
Yeah, okay. Jamie?
Just a clarification on the motion, this is to. To continue, to continue the, the stipend and increase the base salary by 6,000. And back to standard hours, just so it's clear for the public.
Thank you, Jamie.
I was wondering about how to do that.
Yeah. I'm just throwing it out.
Thank you.
So Dawn voted yes, Larry? Larry? Yes. Pam?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Tammy?
Yes.
Yes for me. All right, there being no further business. The meeting is adjourned.
Dear Sanborn Community, I'm sending this video message because we received a very nice letter. Regarding some of our retirees. And we accidentally skipped over the public comment at the recent school board meeting. So I wanted to make sure that everyone had an opportunity to hear these nice words. And to follow our process of sharing emails to the, for public comment to the community. So the letter reads as following. To Superintendent Ambrose and the Sanborn Regional School Board. We would like to acknowledge three retiring SRSD administrators whom we have personally known and have worked with for many decades. They have been employed in the district, we feel that they have all done outstanding jobs in serving the staff, students and the community. And sincerely thank them and wish them well in their retirement. Technology Director Bob Ficker has always been on top of what is new and exciting in technology. And has worked diligently to make sure the staff and students had the devices and support that they needed. To stay current and explore innovative practices. He did this while keeping the taxpayers in mind by recycling and repairing equipment. Analyzing the needs and getting the best deals on purchases. As if his doc, his day job was not enough, Bob also coached the high school boys varsity basketball team. The middle school principal Sandy Rutherford is, as everyone can attest to, a lovely man. With, a, a man with a heart of gold, a true people person. Sandy has been a fair-minded administrator. Who encouraged staff to explore new programs to benefit student learning and his support. And a hearty will take care of it. He was a staunch advocate for students not only in the classroom, but also in his supportive and regular appearances at. Numerous activities after school hours. Sandy was always there to step up to the plate. And be responsive to students and their families as they made their way through the social and emotional turmoil, turmoil that is middle school. Athletic Director Vicky Parity-Gueye, AKA The Queen. Acquired her title not by lineage, but by her tireless effort to promote. Coach, support and coordinate all shapes and forms of athletic pursuits of the district. Vicky was everywhere and anywhere at any time of day. A true, true blue girlfriend to all. With her cheery, laid-back attitude, nothing was ever too big or too small for Vicky to take care of. From coordinating regional sporting events to driving to the middle school to tape up the ankle of an injured player in time. To join her team on the bus. Vicky had a rapport with the students that would bolster their self-confidence while letting them know that she was in their corner if they needed help. She was also instrumental in developing and sustaining a successful district-community partnership to promote fitness and sports. We thank you, Bob, Sandy and Vicky for all your many years of service to our district. And hope you enjoy your well-deserved retirement. Sincerely, Michael Gannon, retired teacher and current coach at the Sanborn Regional Middle School. And I also think that this letter was co-written by. Or supported by his wife Cheryl Gannon, who we all know has been a long-term BudCon member for the Sanborn Regional School. District, and I just wanted to take a minute to thank both of them for this very nice letter and wonderful words. I hope you all have a great weekend, the weather's fantastic, I hope everyone gets outside and has some fun, take care.